Good evening. I'll now call the December 10th, 2024 Bermuda Run Town Council Meeting to order. Reminder for everyone to please silence your phones. Do you want to recognize that we have a quorum? Well, now, if you can, join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is unified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is the intent of the Town Council to make solemn the proceedings of this meeting and the business brought before the governing board to offer the opportunity for a reflective moment of silence. Please join me in a moment of silence. Item number four, Town of Bermuda Run Code of Ethics Statement. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. Pursuant to North Carolina general statutes 168, 86, and 160D, 109, and the Town of Bermuda Run Code of Ethics policy adopted November 9th, 2010, and further endorsed on August 9th, 2022, I would ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual, potential, or perceived conflicts of interest with respect to any matter on the proposed agenda which will come before the Town Council for a vote at this meeting tonight. If so, please speak up and let the Council know at this time before the agenda is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Agenda item number five, adoption of the agenda. The Council has an opportunity to review the agenda. Are there any revisions, or do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Nelson, second by Schaefer. Show of hands. Thank you, Council. Two oh. Agenda item number six, approval of the November 12, 2024 Town Council Meeting Minutes. Councils had an opportunity to review the minutes. Do I have a revision or a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the minute. Second.
Motion by Schaefer, second by Nelson. Show of hands. Two oh. Thank you, Council. Agenda item number seven, oath of office administered to Rod Guthrie. I'd like to ask Mr. Rod Guthrie and our town clerk, Ms. Poe, to come to the podium to take the oath of office.
I assume it's appropriate for my lovely wife to join me.
You can hold the Bible if you'd like.
You stand right there and let her hold the Bible. Oh, you've got your Bible. Okay, good.
What am I?
Okay. All right, you ready? Okay. I state your name.
I, Rod Guthrie.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Rod Guthrie.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
And bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities which are.
And authorities which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Rod Guthrie.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will be faithfully, and that, I'm sorry, and that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
As council member of the Town of Bermuda Run.
As council member of the Town of Bermuda Run.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I now, by the powers vested in me by the general statutes of North Carolina, declare that the council member above has been administered, Rod Guthrie, has been administered the oath of office and is duly sworn to hold office as council member of the Town of Bermuda Run. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a seat for me? Item number eight, citizens' comments. We have one individual signed up to speak tonight. Mr. Williams, can you please remind our citizens on our public hearing and citizens' comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Each speaker shall be allowed a total of three minutes to speak, and shall immediately stop when his or her three minutes are up. When you approach the podium, please state your name and address before speaking. The speaker addressed the Council as a whole, and should not ask any verbal exchange back from the Council. It's not the intent of the public comment period to require the Council or staff to answer impromptu questions, so should be no discussion between the speaker and the members of the audience. Mr. Meadwell will be the timekeeper and will inform you at the 30-second time remaining spot when your time is up. I believe Mr. Ring has signed up to speak tonight.
Yes, first, Mr. Lenny Ring.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I thank you for this opportunity to speak. As I'm sure I will not see some of you in the next few days, Merry Christmas to you, Mayor Brennan, Council, and staff. I thank you for your service to our town. Mr. Guthrie, congratulations on your appointment to the Council. Merry Christmas to you. I look forward to your work with the other members of the Council over the next few months. Mr. Chapman, welcome to Bermuda Run. We all look forward to the assistance that you'll be giving, Mr. Andrew Meadwell. I thank you, Council Persons Ernst and Schaefer, for the conversations that we had Sunday afternoon. I will say a big thank you to the Bermuda Run Vision Committee for the beautiful event which we had Sunday. Thank you for your love of community, neighbors, and friends which flow through your hearts each day and of which I am sure encourages all the hard work necessary to bring Christmas in Bermuda Run to fruition. It isn't new sidewalks, and it is an expansion of the Blue Heron Trail that builds connectivity and inclusion and a sense of pride in Bermuda Run. Anyone who believes these are the keys is doing a disservice to themselves and the community. We build love of community through people like the Vision Committee and the many volunteers they bring together for the various communities throughout Bermuda Run, the ETJ, and the surrounding area. Working, visiting, and having fun together for a common goal. The Davie Women's Auxiliary and the Bermuda Run Garden Club are two of the other organizations within Bermuda Run working to do good things for Bermuda Run. Thank you to them. As I note that all officials of the Town of Bermuda Run reside in one community within Bermuda Run, I encourage Council to do more to encourage inclusivity and connectivity. Please use the existing group as an example of teamwork and building community. I encourage you to never believe that the other communities are not involved or don't really participate in Bermuda Run. From a wonderful Christmas story, I say, God bless us, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ring. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, presentations. Mr. Meadwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am pleased and honored to have Mr. Jaiman Gaddy with the Davie County Tax Office. Mr. Gaddy is the tax administrator and will be presenting to you tonight the Davie County reevaluation that occurs every four years here in the county. So please welcome Mr. Gaddy to the podium for a presentation to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gaddy, as you approach the podium, I'll ask, remind our audience that Council is welcome to ask questions, but as we have as our typical protocol, we do not allow our presenters to take questions from the audience. I do know that Mr. Gaddy is absolutely willing to have folks from the community reach out to his office and answer questions. I'm sure there will be a few questions to be answered once this information makes its way to the households. With that, again, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Andrew. As already mentioned, my name is Jaiman. I am the tax administrator for Davie County. Been here, December will be three years now. I've been in this profession about 14 years, started across the river in Davidson, went to Durham a few years, and now I've been blessed enough to be able to come to Davie County. So tonight, my goal is to try to just give you an update, a reevaluation. Okay? What is it? Why do we do it? Share some numbers with you and to hopefully answer any questions that you may have as time goes up. With that, what is a reappraisal? Okay? Reappraisal is basically the process of updating all the values. But the key is, is this is real property, which includes things like the land, the buildings, or anything affixed to the land. We don't do personal property, or we don't consider personal property as a revow because it's updated or revowed pretty much every single year. That's why some of you may get listing forms in the mail each year, and that's for personal property usually, and that's what that does. So reevaluation every four years is for real property. Why do we do it? It's law. It's not because it's the most favorable thing amongst all of our citizens across the county, but it is law that all 100 counties in North Carolina have to do it. Now, the statute does state that we only have to do it once every eight years. That's the minimum. However, subsection three does allow for counties to advance reappraisals, which is what we've done here. The Davie County Commissioners passed a resolution years ago to do reappraisal for Davie County every four years, and that's the way it's been since then. Personally, I recommend the four years because the market can be so volatile that if you wait an eight-year span, it could be chaotic, you know, for just a lack of better words. While we're guided by statutes, we're also guided by standards, okay? In 1934, an organization, as we call it, the IAAO, which stands for International Association of Assessing Officers, was formed. The reason this organization was formed was to train and educate professionals, work towards more reliable, or excuse me, equitable assessment systems, and focus on a revision of property tax legislation, okay? Through the years, they have determined that there's pretty much three units of measure that we abide by. Those three, as you can see, the median ratio, which I'll get into a little bit more here shortly, coefficient of dispersion, and a price-related differential. Just to kind of let you know what the two last ones are. Coefficient of dispersion is pretty much how tight your numbers are. That's all it really recommends or represents. The price-related differential is a measurement that we use for vertical equity. We look at equity kind of in two ways, on horizontal and then a vertical. And that PRD, for short, or is what we call it, is that unit of measure that we look at for the vertical equity. And then, like I said, the median ratio, I've got a couple of examples that will help explain that a little better. So where do we start? Okay? How does a reappraisal process work? Pretty much, we start with a single market. And over the last four years, we have divided the county up into about 228 individual markets or subdivisions in some cases. We take each neighborhood or each market, and we look at both the land and the improved or improvements. And we determined, where do we fall? When we run our reports, ourselves will determine where we're falling on that median ratio. And with that, like I said, a couple of examples. Let's take, for instance, we have a subdivision called Northside Estates. It's 14 homes. We've had seven sales, and from there, we're going to do some analyzing, and we'll see where we're at, okay? So if you look at the column on the left, the far left, it's, those are our assessed values, okay? That's what the homeowners are being taxed on or assessed, or taxed based on that value. If you look at the middle column, those are the sale prices of these homes. And it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that we're a little bit low on our, a little bit on the low side. As you can see, the ratios, now remember, our target is one. You can see that the ratios are coming short of that, and the graph on the far right just kind of simplifies or brings it to the surface a lot easier. So from that data, we know in our office that there has to be changes made, okay? So we're going to make changes to this market, and in most cases, specific to this market or this subdivision, okay? So once we do that, now we see, again, the far left is our new assessed values, okay? As you can see by the ratios, we are pretty much on target now. We are where we need to be according to the IAAO standards, okay? And again, the graph kind of paints the picture, okay? So on the flip side, we're going to look at another quick one. Let's just call it Southside Estates. Again, 14 homes, seven sales. On the assessed values, you see on the far left, in the middle, you see the sale prices. But the first thing you notice is, in this case, we're a little bit high. So while we need to make adjustments, it's going to be a little bit, well, the formatting is kind of the same, but the adjustments will, in this case, bring the values down versus going up, so. And as you see, we've made those adjustments. Our ratio, our median ratio is now one, which, again, according to the IAAO standards, is where we need to be. And we will do this for all 228 markets. With that being said, hopefully that lets you know this is not a fly-by-night process. We've been doing this for two and a half years. And right now, we're pretty much in a reviewing stage, just to make sure everything looks like where it needs to be, so.
Would it be okay to ask a question on this?
Yes, sir. Anytime you have a question.
So your example in both of these showed seven of 14. Seven sales of a total 14 in this community, right? Hypothetically, if there were, let's say, two sales out of that 14, how does that influence the distribution and the alignment of realigning to that one? Does it have less of a factor?
No, sir. We will still use that data, but what we also will do at that time is bring in other subdivisions within a certain radius. Because a lot of times, let's just say you've got the Northside Estates, the developer comes in, he builds out the homes, well, guess what? He's probably going to be the guy that builds the development right across the street, too, even though it's two totally different developments. So what we can do is utilize sales in similar neighborhoods that would comp out to that certain individual neighborhood.
So are you trying to achieve a particular percentage of sales against the total population to determine that realigned number?
No.
What's that magic point where you say, I've captured enough data points to be able to adjust or not adjust?
I mean, the more sales, the better, but there's not a number that we target, per se. We just do the best we can with what data we have. Hopefully that answered your question.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Good question. Okay? So the one thing to take away from the two fictitious markets here is properties are not going to change uniformly, okay? Some markets may increase, some markets may decrease, and some may remain the same or about the same, okay? So, you know, a lot of times, people have relatives that might be across the county or, you know, in a different area of the current county, and they'll call each other the day they get their notice, and they're like, my value went up, what did yours do? Mine went down. Well, then, they're wondering why. All the markets are different. They're not all the same. So that's the one thing we try to educate the citizens of the county with is yours, your change in value may be different than your neighbor or someone across in another part of the county, so.
I have another question. So I have two homes, side by side. One home sells, one home is not sold, it's been owned for years. In your example, with the home that's sold, and let's say it sold for 30% more than its current assessed value. That's my neighbor's house. How does that neighbor's sale affect my house in this kind of?
It will influence your house. Yes, sir. Each individual neighborhood, like I said, we will look at the sales, if there are sales in that neighborhood. And because we are what's called a mass appraiser, so we're not fee appraisers. We don't individualize one house. So if we've got, you know, in those two cases, we've got, let's just say, seven sales of that particular neighborhood, even it may be 14 houses, it may be 50. Those seven sales, or 10, or whatever, would influence the whole, not just the individual sales. Did that answer your question?
And then, in that community that you described, that 228 or whatever that number was of total communities, so that set of sales is within that sort of group of homes within that one community as part of that math?
Yes, each individual neighborhood, all 228 have their own sales or data.
Right.
And that data will influence those 228 neighborhoods individually, if that makes sense.
Okay. And I don't want to put you on the spot, but for Bermuda Run, the Town of Bermuda Run, do you have a sense of how many communities are comprised within the Town of Bermuda Run? We know, we think of it as three large communities, but that's probably a different math than what you're describing.
It is, and I'm afraid I don't have that answer.
Okay. We can get it back to us, and we can make sure we capture that.
I sure will. Because, you know, it may be, just as we were kind of talking when I first got here, you know, you've got Brayden coming in now, and you've got the new one, I think called Hillsdale down here. So, you know, once a developer comes in and he takes, you know, a plot of land, I mean, it could be 30, 40, 50 acres, he cuts the road and he plats it out. He's created pretty much a new neighborhood, and it's going to be cut out of the big piece and become its own neighborhood. So let's say, for instance, a developer comes in, cuts the road, plats it out, instead of 228, now we've got 229. But the one big one is now one shorter than what it was. So if it had, like, let's just say, 300 parcels in it, now it's 299 because that one parcel is now cut out to become that new development. Does that make sense?
We have a pretty diverse size of our communities, right? We have Bermuda Run West with 152. We have Kinderton with, I believe it's 526, I think is the number roughly. And then we have East, which is roughly 900, and let's call it 925. So we have a pretty big disparity in sizing. So I'm trying to wrap my head around those, that math around that 200, and sort of how to overlay that into those three very different-sized communities. And maybe that's a follow-up question, but just trying to, in my mind, does Bermuda Run East represent three communities, and West is one, and two perhaps in Kinderton, for example?
Right. The 228 is a total across the county, so it's not specific to Bermuda Run. Bermuda Run, you know, hypothetical guess here, I mean, it could be easily eight to 10 neighborhoods, roughly.
Okay.
Yep, which would consist of Bermuda Run.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Or makeup Bermuda Run. Okay? So speaking of sales, you know, and these numbers are specific to Bermuda Run, there was a total number of sales of about 555 across the, or across this area. Of those, 17 were vacant or qualified vacant sales, and 465 were qualified approved, okay? Now, if you do the math, you'll see real quick they don't add up, and that's because not all sales are looked at as qualified sales. You know, there are sales out there that could be bank sales, you know, foreclosures, estate sales, sales between relatives, could be some kind of a business joint partnership deal, you know? So there are sales that are not deemed qualified. And so that's the reason, if you did the quick math, you would see that they're not adding up.
This total number of sales is during the entire previous reappraisal period?
The four-year period.
Four-year period.
Yes. It started, we start January 1 of 2021, and those sales are from that timeframe until now.
Mr. Gaddy, so if I understand you, then, is it your office's responsibility, then, to determine what's a qualified sale? So you actually look at the actual real estate records or some background on that property? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The best we can. You know, some sales don't have a lot of information, but we research until we run out of options. Okay? Okay, so these are probably, you know, these are the numbers currently. The column on the left is, I put these numbers in because these are the ones that I report to DOR, or the Department of Revenue. Department of Revenue wants to know what's the growth between revaluation years, okay? So our last revaluation, or excuse me, our last revaluation was 2021. And so if you look at those numbers, those numbers represent January 1, 2021 to now. So for the county overall, we're up about 51.26%. Bermuda Run's, you know, 42.45, and you can see Coolamie and Moxville following suit. The column on the right, as a taxpayer, you know, I'm glad that we're growing, but what I want to know as a taxpayer is, what's the difference between what I'm paying right now and what am I going to be paying, or where am I at now versus where am I going to be, okay? So the column on the left is the growth between 24 and 25, okay? So the county, as you can see, is about 39.3. Bermuda Run, 35.47, and again, Coolamie and Moxville following suit, so.
Before we leave that, maybe some other questions up here.
Oh, that's fine.
So translating that to, I understand that each house will vary, but as I look at these numbers, and you own a home in Bermuda Run, and you're taking the averages, the average home in Bermuda Run will see a 35% increase in its title. the average home in Bermuda Run will see a 35% increase in its tax assessed value between the prior appraisal and this appraisal.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, those numbers are averages. So you could have, I mean, you could have a home, you know, that's 100% increase, and one that's, you know, went down maybe 40%, you know? So those are averages. One thing to just let you know, these numbers are not specific, well, I mean, they're specific to Davie County, but they're not, they are indicative of the whole state, just to let you know. Other counties right now that are looking at 25 revales, there's one county that's going to be at 50-plus percent. There's another one, when you look at the numbers, just quick glances, they're going to be probably 60-plus. And then there's another one that's a little bit more rural, with a little bit less commercial and industrial, they're going to be about 35, 30 to 35%. So this is not a Davie County only thing. This is statewide, and I would go ahead and say it's nationwide. You know, these kind of growths, ever since the pandemic hit back in 2020, anybody that has done anything with real estate knows what the market's been doing. And while it may have slowed down on the number of days it takes to sell a property, doesn't mean that you're getting less than what you're asking. It just means that you might have to wait a few more weeks to get what, you know, that value. So.
As I look at the two, for me, what stands out, if I look at Bermuda Run, I look at Coolamie, and I see the disparity or the vast difference in those percentages, is it an accurate statement to say that those percentages are being applied against a different base value of real estate property? So, for example, if the average home in Coolamie, pick a number, 250,000, and the average property in Bermuda Run, let's say, is 400,000, those numbers are going to be applied against a differing base value, so the net impact of that actual tax amount could actually be greater for Bermuda Run than Coolamie because it's against a base of a different value. Is that a fair way to describe that?
Yep. Yep. Yeah, the median home price around Bermuda Run would definitely be higher than the median home price in Coolamie.
Yep.
Any other questions? Good questions. Just to kind of break it down a little bit more, these are specific to here in Bermuda Run. When you look at, I kind of break it down into these categories, residential is about a 42.94, and then you've got commercial, industrial, office, and multifamily. So those are the numbers that coincides with each one of those individually.
So I'm glad you're showing this picture. Can we go back to the previous slide? So for people who are watching the video or consuming this, I took the 35.7 to mean the residential, right? But that's an average.
That is, yes, sir.
Now, going to the other slide, the person who lives in Bermuda Run should be actually thinking more about the second slide number, which is, if you own a home in Bermuda Run, we go to the next slide, that's really more like 43%.
That would be a fair statement, yes.
Okay.
My apologies, I probably.
There's not like another slide if these numbers are going to keep going up, are there? Is this the last one?
No, because I hope to walk out of here today.
Okay. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I did make that connection before, so.
I also assume residential means single-family residents as opposed to multifamily? Is that distinction?
True, yes, sir. Yep. Now, with these kind of increases, naturally, there's concerns. You know, we have our citizens that's on limited income, we understand it, we get it. But unfortunately, those numbers is what the market's telling us. It's not just numbers that we've pulled out of the air. Like I said, we've been doing this for about two and a half years, and we've been trending the market as we go along. So with the concerns, our hope is to educate, once again, the citizens of the county, is like, you have options, possibly, in some cases. There are programs, as you can see, we have some exemption programs, we have some land programs, if you are an owner of large amounts of land. Now, for those first two, you do have some qualifications you have to meet. So like the exemption programs, you can only, I think you have to be 65 and older, you can't make no more than a certain amount of income, and there may be a couple of other small predetermined qualifications that you have to make or meet. The land, you know, you have to be growing something on it, you might, you could do it forest land if it meets regulations or those. So we're trying to get the word out that there may be some possible options of some of our citizens here in the county. Number three, you know, worst-case scenario, just come to us and sit down with us. You know, if there's a payment plan that we can come up with to work with people, we'll do it. Because we don't want anyone getting into a situation to where it forces us to go another route, if that makes sense. I mean, by statute, there's other options that we can do, but we choose or would like to choose not to do those options. The fourth thing there is the appeal process. You know, we are human. So with that being said, are there some values or some homes or some things that may be a little bit outside of that tight circle, you know? If you think your home is, or if we have it assessed, and you think it's too high, you have the right to appeal. We kind of jokingly say, you know, there's some good reasons to appeal, and there's some not so good reasons to appeal. You know, you can appeal if you think the market value substantially exceeds what the actual market is of your property. Okay? The market value is inconsistent with the market value of similar type properties within the same neighborhood. Okay? So with that one, if you're living up here in Bermuda Run, don't be looking for like or similar properties in Coolamie. Okay? Make sure that it's similar properties around where you currently reside. The property information, oh, I'm sorry.
Just a quick question. On that, if you feel like it's on the inconsistency question with similar properties, how would a taxpayer determine that? Is there public records that they can go to look at and see what all the other homes in their neighborhood were appraised at? Or do they have to go around and just knock on their neighbor's door and say, hey, look what I got?
Good question. There's another thing that, I actually tried to get a software that would allow citizens to use for situations like that. But really, the only thing they can do now is you can go on GIS, or you can go on the county website, and you can pull records of your property and all your neighbors. I mean, you'll know what the assessed values are. So if you live in a neighborhood and you know, you know, there's three other houses that's pretty similar to yours, and you know the addresses, or you know the owners, you can easily go online, find those records, and compare. You know, and if it's just a gut feeling, you know, if you just think that we got it wrong, you know, appeal by all means, and we'll take a look at it. Just because someone appeals doesn't mean that the value changes. As a matter of fact, the value could do one of three things if someone appeals. It could stay the same, it could go down, but we might find that we're missing something that would cause it to go up. So while appeals are there to utilize, I would just be cautious or, you know, do my due diligence first. Okay? If you've got friends, maybe you've got a friend that's a realtor, by all means, utilize whoever you can to prove that what the value that you think your home should be is accurate. Okay? Just to call and say, I don't think it's worth that much. I mean, while we'll listen to you, there's probably not a lot that we'll do or can do at that time. You need to prove us wrong, I guess, for lack of better words.
Well, to that, I guess, to that question, then, I, as a resident, won't know the population that comprises the math that you use for the homes to determine that change. Is the tax office able and willing to share what that population of residences are? Because to Rod's question, I know who's around me, but I don't know how wide that ring is that includes the population that you use for that math. If that's something you would share with a resident who had that question?
Sure. We are as transparent as we can be. If anyone has questions, by all means, come see us. I mean, we'll sit down and give you all the information. You know, we can show you the sales that we're using for individual neighborhoods if needed. So yes, sir, come see us. Because like I said, we are human also, and we may, you know, have one or two wrong, you know? So, and I would rather get it right and make it right, because this is a four-year term. Okay? So. And this one is probably, the biggest one is, you know, whenever someone calls or someone asks, the first thing I try to tell them is, look at your tax card. You would believe, or you'd probably not believe, how many people has never looked at their tax card. You know, they don't know if we've got it assessed at five bedrooms when it's only three, you know, two bathrooms when it's only one. Square footage could be wrong. So there's things on those cards or those records that could be off. You know, we've got some homes here in the county that's probably, I think they were built in the late 1700s. Through the years, I'm sure there's been changes to that property. Some may have went through proper channels, you know, went through permitting and all of that, and some of those changes may not. So I encourage everybody to look at their tax record. Okay? Make sure we got it right, at least start somewhere. Let's make sure we've got the information as accurate as it should be.
Okay, and that's available online, too?
That is, sir, yeah. Some of the invalid, you know, that just increased too much, it's not worth, you know, the insurance value, you know, nobody would buy it for that amount. In today's market, you'd be surprised what you can probably sell your house for, you know, truly.
You mentioned home sales, but you then just momentarily said that about improvements. So does your work obviously include sales? Does it also include investigating building permits and how those have changed as well as part of your analysis?
Yes, sir. If we, to kind of give you an example, let's say we had a sale that took place in 2022. Okay? The new homeowner come in, took a permit out to do some things to the property, or maybe added a pool in the backyard or whatever, well, that sale is no longer valid because there's been a change to that property. So we have to pull it out of our pool of qualified sales. And we do that all the time. We work very closely with permitting. Whenever someone does the right thing and goes through the permitting department, we follow up on all the permits. Sometimes we just catch things by riding around. You know, new wood sticks out like a sore thumb. A brand-new white concrete driveway stands out. So, you know, there are certain things that sometimes, just as an appraiser, as you're riding around, your eye just catches or is drawn to attention. But if we do find that changes have been made, those sales are no longer valid sales. Yep. Good question. Anybody else? So how do you appeal? The informal process will begin as soon as the notices are mailed out. My goal, or our goal, is to get them out, if not the end of January, the 1st of February. And the reason we can't do it like January 2nd is because we still, you would not believe the transfer of deeds all the way up to December the 31st. I mean, there are still properties moving each and every day. And a developer may come in, and he's on to plot a land, and now he's ready to plat it out, you know? So things are still changing until 12 o'clock midnight, pretty much, December the 31st. So we have to take time to make sure we button up all of those loose ends or any of those new transfers or those type things. You know, we have to research and make sure they're good. So as soon as you get your notice, you can appeal, you can come by the office and drop it off at that time. You know, if someone has questions, they're more than welcome to sit down with us, or we with them, and, you know, discuss things out. You can email it in as an attachment. There will be a fillable form, I believe, online. Once we turn it on, right now it's not there, we won't turn it on until the notices are mailed out, then we'll turn it on. Your notice of value is your appeal form. Okay? Now, the one thing is, if you agree with your value, you don't need to turn it or fill it out and send it in. Okay? If you lose one, or if you lose it, no worries, we'll have an appeal form online that you can print, fill it out, and again, mail it in or get it to us, and however way you need to.
Maybe on that point, I know there's a lot of people who have mortgages, and oftentimes, I believe, the tax bill coming in the August timeframe gets sent to mortgage companies for payment. Will this come to homeowners or mortgage companies?
These will go to the owners of the property.
Okay. So this is the opportunity for those who may have a mortgage, may never see their tax records.
Right.
Just to go online, opportunity for them to actually see that and take action if they need to.
Right, okay. Which brings up a good point. You know, as a homeowner, if you do have an escrow account, and you see that there's going to be a chance of a rising payment, you may want to reach out to your, or the escrow company, or the mortgage company and say, hey, look, you know, we just had a reevaluation. Because what's going to happen is, if you don't, the next, the following year is when you, as a homeowner, is going to fill it. You're not going to fill it '25, you're going to fill it in '26, when the escrow company has to adjust, you know, that payment to pick up where they're probably in the negative balance to pay the bill. So, good point. And with that, well, before any questions, there is one thing that I wanted to share. Those numbers that we were looking at earlier does not take into consideration the appeals as we just talked. So there is a chance that those numbers will change. You know, depending on the percentage, I think the, my predecessor used to use roughly maybe a 15% as just a number, potential number. So if you took those values, and let's just say, you know, appeals did reset us 15% or so, then that would be the new increases. But those numbers do not reflect the appeals. So just keeping that in mind, and they will come, I know they will.
So as residents of Bermuda Run and the countywide, somewhere late January to sometime in February, they should expect to see this in the mail and be able to review it and respond appropriately if need be?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep. And, you know, speaking, one last thing of the appeal process, if we can't settle it in-house or between us, the next step would be what's called the Board of VNR, or the Board of Equalization and Review. I don't know if you've heard that term spoke before. So if we can't settle it, we go there, you know, whatever they decide supersedes us. So, and if you don't like what they come up with, I mean, you can go all the way to Raleigh. So there are processes that you can do. So there are processes that you can do. So just because we say no doesn't mean that it has to end, you know, you have other options even after that, so.
Any questions? Any questions?
No.
Well, thank you for your time. Thank you very much for coming and, and sharing this information. Again, I'll remind the audience that it sounds like sometime in the February timeframe, you should expect to see this and certainly take a look at that. And if you have questions, I'm sure Mr. Gaddy's office is prepared with operators standing by to, to take, to take, to take those calls as they, as they come in.
I do have, and I apologize, I do have one more quick thing I'd like to give Andrew. The county does have a mobile app these days. I don't know if you've seen it or heard about it. If you just want to scan this QR code, you can upload the new app. It, it's not just tax office information, it is pretty much countywide-type information minus the sheriff's department. I think they have their own app. But this one here will cover a lot of the other departments. I'll leave it with Andrew. And again, thank you for your time.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, deep breath, everyone. Center yourself, focus. Okay, we will now shift to item number 10, proposed action items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you know it, you have budget amendment 2024-25-01. This is the acceptance of monies of, to the, to our 2425 general fund. This is an amount of $12,000 from the Davie County Community Foundation as revenue that was expended as part of the Christmas in Bermuda Run event, our 2024 Christmas in Bermuda Run event. So I'll turn it back over to you. We've done these multiple times as a way to pay for these, but we have to show these as revenue and then show as expenses in, in our general fund.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Medwell? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Schaefer. Second by Mr. Guthrie. Show of hands. 3-0, thank you, counsel. Okay, moving on to item number 11, Town of Bermuda Run 25th Anniversary Celebration Recognition to mouthful. As we bring 2024 to close, just want to remind everyone that we, we had multiple events this year in celebration of the town's 25th anniversary. Again, I'll continue to say it, thank you, thank you, thank you to all the coordinators and chairs and volunteers who helped make these things happen. These things do not happen on their own, and I greatly appreciate all that was done to help coordinate everything from food truck Fridays to concert activities to our banners, to our luncheon. Speaking of our luncheon, we had several dignitaries to join us for a special recognition luncheon. Had that over at the Bermuda Run Country Club. We were joined by many, many folks who were part of our community and its history and its legacy in getting us to where we were, we are today. And included in that was State Representative Julia Howard, State Senator Steve Jarvis. We also had representatives from Senator Tillis and Senator Budd's office. So at the luncheon, I was given the unique honor to, to be presented some of these letters. And so I'm going to take just a quick moment and read them to everyone that, the letters that were presented to me. So the first letter from Tom Tillis's office, Dear Friends, pardon me, I am pleased to extend my best wishes to everyone gathered to celebrate Bermuda Run's 25th anniversary. While the Senate schedule prevents me from attending today's event, I would like to congratulate the citizens of Bermuda Run on 25 successful years of incorporation and acknowledge your community's vision of promoting growth while preserving a small-town feel. Small towns are the heartbeat of our state, and I am proud that North Carolina is home to such a thriving community. I wish you all the best for a wonderful celebration. Sincerely, Tom Tillis, U.S. Senator. So from Senator Tillis. Mayor Mike Brennan, pardon me, congratulations to the Town of Bermuda Run as you celebrate your 25th anniversary. With roots dating back to the Ariston Farm in the 1920s, Bermuda Run became the newest town in Davie County in 1999. Today, Bermuda Run offers residents and visitors alike many opportunities, including residential developments, a diverse business atmosphere, including Davie Medical Center, Win-Mock Special Events Center, Truist Sports Park, shopping and dining, ample outdoor recreation, and more. The town's vision to aspire to be a welcoming small town with a diverse economic base and excellent quality of life lays the groundwork for a great North Carolina town. As a Davie County native, it is a privilege to represent towns like Bermuda Run in the United Senate. If I can ever be of assistance, do not hesitate to contact my office. Sincerely, Ted Budd, United States Senator. And then lastly, I was given this plaque by Senator Steve Jarvis, and I'll just read it to you. State of North Carolina, be it known that Senate District 30 of the North Carolina General Assembly congratulates Bermuda Run in recognition of the town's 25th anniversary, Davie County, North Carolina, November 8, 2024, from Senator Steve Jarvis. So again, thank you all for participating and being a part of our various town activities and celebrating our 25th anniversary, and I look forward to many more years ahead. With that, I will turn it over to item number 12, introduction of new staff member. Mr. Medwell?
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. I am pleased to announce our newest team member here for the town of Bermuda Run, Mr. Charlie Chatten. Charlie comes to us from Colville County Economic Development. Charlie's a stranger to, to Davie County.
No.
But I apologize, he's going to make a great asset to this town, to our community and this town, so.
I'm, I'm excited to be here, I'm thrilled to be back in Davie County. Grew up here, graduated from Old Davie High School, was the last graduating class there. I went to Carolina for my undergrad and then Master in Public Administration. Went a little bit further west. My wife is currently in grad school at Appalachian State. That landed us in Lenore, and I've been with Colville County Economic Development for a year and two months now. I think it started last November. It's been great, but this opportunity came available and I was really excited to get to come back here to Davie County where I grew up. All my family's still here, my wife's family, my wife's family's here, so we're just both thrilled to be back in the area, and I'm thrilled to be here at, at Bermuda Run.
Great, thank you, welcome very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Medwell will not start immediately taking vacations, just so anyone's asking questions here. But welcome, we look, we look forward to what you will bring to our town and, and the residents of our town as well, so thank you. Mr. Medwell, Town Manager, report and comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one item, and this is just to, just to brief counsel, as we are in the midst of the holiday season, a continuing issue with parcels and packages being delivered to the Bermuda Run East Package Room. Our, these deliveries are unlike any of our other neighborhoods in, in our town, where if the delivery postal service delivers a parcel, if they don't, if they don't fit into a parcel locker, they're taken to the, to the residence's home in East. It's taken to a package room. It's a very small room, a five-by-seven, I believe, five-by-five. And as you can imagine, with the number of packages that we receive, that room fills up. So a couple of things that we've traditionally done, we've extended holiday hours on Saturday just to see if we can help that staff person there to get their packages out and get more opportunity for residents to come and get their packages. And if we see that that doesn't work, we may even extend those hours during the middle of the week, just to, just to help residents receive their packages. But the other thing that we're going to do, we'll be sending a notice out to the cost of conduct, just for my name residents, please go by and check to see if you have packages being delivered. That mode, that mode of notification has changed somewhat from the postal service. And if you're not checking your phone and the app, you may not know that you have a package. So it's just really critical that our residents go and check the package room for packages. So we'll probably send that out probably, probably tomorrow, that, that notice out to just those Bermuda Run East residents, just to buy, please go by and check your package room to see if you have a package. With that, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, I want to be careful what I say here because I do still want to get my mail delivery. But, but I will just say that Mr. Medwell and I have been working aggressively since January, trying to get this issue solved. I've driven through all of our neighborhoods, I've taken pictures. Every other neighborhood in our town has kiosks, you have mail that's delivered and you have postal boxes down below. If there are insufficient space for more boxes, they get delivered to homes. In Bermuda Run East, we have what I call the Holiday Mount Vesuvius that starts to spill out from the package room, and that in combination in the old days, parcel notes were placed into people's mailboxes to say, you have a parcel, to know to come back and collect your parcel. That has now stopped. So not only do we have copious amounts of packages stacking up, you have residents who have no idea they may have received a package, especially if it's a package from someone else that shipped to you. And so we have been working very aggressively with Senator Tillis's office. I hope that I continue to get those return calls, but we are working very aggressively to try to get some solution. I know my predecessors have faced this challenge in years past. I, I'm not going to go down without a fight. I, I think the right thing to do for every single resident in this community is to have mail delivered to their mailboxes, packages delivered to parcel lockers, and if those aren't possible, deliver them to homes. Don't threaten to force every person in Bermuda Run East to drive to Advance to pick up your package. That's in my mind unacceptable. I probably said more than I should have. As you can tell, it's not okay for me. Residents deserve better. With that, thank you for teeing that up for me and allowing my blood pressure to increase. Moving on, so, Mr. Gaddy, thank you again for your presentation. Those are not necessarily the easiest presentations. I don't expect flowers or chocolates to be handed out after the meeting, nor did you probably, but that is part of the process, and I thank you for your work and the effort you and your team do. A difficult job, but it's part of our statute-driven process to do this. I also want to welcome again Rod Guthrie to our Town Council. I appreciate his dedication, his service on our planning board, his knowledge and experience, and I know he will bring much of that to this council. So look forward very much to working with Mr. Guthrie going forward. Our fourth Christmas in Bermuda Run was on Sunday. I hope most of you, if not all of you, I recognize a lot of faces out there that made it to that wonderful event. We can never, never, never know what the weather's going to bring, but that was one wonderful Sunday afternoon that you don't often get in a December day. So very fortunate, again, as I said when I made my comments at the event, this would not happen without the committees and the chair people and the volunteers and the coordination, and frankly, work that will be starting in the coming weeks and months for next year. It takes that much of a runway, so I appreciate every single person who made the effort to coordinate and help and direct traffic and coordinate all kinds of craft-making and picture-taking and, and our business sponsors and supporting sponsors who year after year have come and have done everything from chocolate to cookies to smores, all the above. That event doesn't happen without all of those community partners coming together, and a very, very proud day. And as I said to folks, I saw an awful lot of smiling faces, and that's the best measure of a great event. Couple of notes here, upcoming presentation, so in our February council meeting, I've invited Cameron Webb, our Davie County Director of Emergency Management. I think it's time for us to cycle him back through, have him have the opportunity to present his program, his team, and, and the collaboration that he does with all of our emergency personnel across the entire county. In March, I've reached out and they have agreed to have Davie Medical Center will come and talk with us. We have our campus administrator as well as the chief medical officer. So look forward to having them come and talk with us about what they do and the opportunities ahead for Davie Medical Center. I'll end with saying that a year ago, I had the opportunity, much like Mr. Guthrie, to stand up and take the oath of office. I, I will say that I've, I've learned a lot, I continue to learn. Forty years in corporate life does not prepare you for being a mayor, just in case any of you are wondering. It's very different, very unique, and very special, and I am absolutely honored to sit in this chair, to serve alongside an outstanding council and to partner with our, our town staff. I make mistakes, I try to learn from those mistakes, I try to grow each and every day. I hope and look forward to next year and the year beyond and the year beyond. Serving this community is an absolute blessing and an opportunity, and I thank you for allowing me that privilege. And lastly, I'll just say that I wish each and every one of you the safest and merriest of Christmas and, and Happy New Year. And with that, I'll turn it over to our council for closing comments.
I'll just make a couple of comments. I want to echo what our mayor said about a year on the council, every day is a learning experience, incredible learning experience, and I'm grateful every single day. Want to thank our incredible, the incredible staff. Welcome, Charlie. You all are just absolutely extraordinary, and Mr. Mayor and fellow council people, thank you too. I also want to thank all the, all the citizens and residents who just have been incredible, the volunteers. And then I finally want to acknowledge Lenny Ring's comments, and I noticed there was a lot of people nodding in the audience when he was speaking, but particularly the emphasis he put on the sense of community we have in our town and the emphasis on inclusivity and connectivity is very important characteristics that we can all work towards. So thank you, Mr. Ring, for that. Welcome, Mr. Guthrie, and thank everybody, and happy holidays.
I'd like to thank Mr. Gaddy. Your, your presentation tonight was very straightforward, easy to understand. I appreciate that so much, so thank you for being here tonight. Welcome, Rod. I all too would like to thank Lenny for his beautiful, beautiful comments. We couldn't have said it better, Lenny, it was beautiful. And I'd like to thank all of you here for allowing me to sit here in this chair. It's been a wonderful learning experience this year. I have great colleagues, and I want to mention the staff because you all work, Andrew, Cindy, Dora, Brian, at the end of this year. You deserve kudos for the amount of work you do for this town, and it shows. We're all very proud of what you do. And to all of you volunteers that have been here for the community vision work, the 25th, the Community Vision Fund, the volunteers, couldn't thank you enough. And very exciting news, you will see the reel, the thank you reel on Facebook in the next few days from Christmas in Bermuda Run. You'll see all your smiling faces, some crazy happenings. So with that, I'd like to say Merry Christmas, have a safe and happy holiday, and a prosperous New Year.
Thank you, Steve.
Well, as the junior kid on the, on the council now, I may first say that I am extremely honored to have been appointed. It, I take it very seriously, the, the trust that you as a council have placed in me, and I intend to do everything in my power to, to protect that and to honor that, and not just for this council, but also for every citizen in Bermuda Run. Lenny, you and Ms. Ring are sterling examples of the citizens that we have and the ones we want to incorporate into the work of our town. Thank you for being here, and thank you for supporting the work of the town and the work of this council. So I look forward to talking to you and working with you both, so thank you. Also, I want to thank young lady Also, I want to thank the young lady in the blue sweater who, uh, who agreed to allow me to take this opportunity to serve, uh, and who will be celebrating with me next week, our 50th wedding anniversary.
Oh, congratulations.
She, she doesn't look like it, I know, but I'm taking good care of each other. Um, I, I can't stop or leave without at least acknowledging the work of Melinda Zalaga, the lady whose position I now fill. And Melinda, as soon as she learned that I was being asked to, to take this position, reached out to me and has been supportive and very helpful, and her work on this council for the past several years has been, has been exceptional. So I want to recognize personally the good work of Melinda. I'll do my best to fill those shoes. With that, I also wish you all a delightful Christmas and a very safe and happy new year. Thank you.
Moving on to our next topic, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Guthrie, Schaper, a show of hands, we are unanimous. Thank you, everyone, happy holidays. Thank you again for coming tonight.